Let's call the July 6th City Council worst session to order a roll call for Sue.
Mayor Rogers.
Present.
Councillor Bacon.
Here.
Councillor Finley.
Here.
Councillor Yaronell Holloman.
Here.
Councillor Martinez Plankarte. And I think we lost Gene. He was on earlier. Okay, I see him now on the attendee side. Okay, Gene.
Present.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, all present.
All right. All right, well, first off, hopefully you all had a, and anybody listening at home, hopefully you had a nice, relaxing and safe Fourth of July weekend. And it's good to see you all here this evening. So council agenda and meeting, any items, folks, you would like to discuss or change for the business session? All right, hearing none. The fund financial statements. Matt, do you want to mention anything, or should we move from there? No? All right. Any questions for Matt, folks? No? Okay. Matt, it looked like on there that the ending fund balance at the end of April was five million higher than budgeted. Is that good news, or is that just a calendar item?
Can you point me to the specific line item? Are you talking about the fund, general fund, or in general, or which number in particular? Let me try that again, Mayor. Which, were you talking about on page one, the overall? You're muted.
Sorry about that. Yes, sorry. It's, it's the summary page, I think, on the first city budget totals, beginning fund balance. And so you've got the budget, or the ending budget, and the fifty-two versus forty-seven is what I was looking at.
Fifty-two versus forty-seven?
Forty-seven million.
Yeah, I think those are totally different numbers. Forty-seven million, I think you're looking at the total beginning fund balance versus the ending fund balance.
Right.
Yeah, the different, different time measurements. The forty-seven million is where we anticipated being on July 1st, 2019, and the fifty-two million is where we're at as of end of April. It's hard to necessarily say that's a good position. I think that in April, we're, you know, at a, it's not a straight line, because our revenues aren't coming, you know, equal month per month. So I think we're in a good position, but I wouldn't say that that's like, like the ball of the park. Keep in mind, too, it's also a conglomeration of all the funds. So you have, really, I would point you back to, say, last August's fund breakdown to see exactly where, you know, each of those funds ended last year for the beginning fund balance, comparing that forty-seven million to the fifty million in the total beginning fund balance line. And then here shortly, and within a month or two, we'll have another update on that as to where we land at the end of June, 2020. And even today, we're looking at numbers to see where we're coming in at, so.
All right, thank you. Any other comments or questions for Matt?
Someone's driving me crazy. Someone needs to turn off their computer audio if they called on their phone.
Sounds like a whole bunch of crickets.
Whoever's on a desktop computer, you need to turn your audio off.
I think it might be Sue. Her microphone might be too close to the computer. There you go. But it's still getting an echo because they're, yeah.
Today, 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 today.
Oh, this is terrible.
All right, let's, let's try to move on. All right, I think I'm gonna, I think I'm gonna hold up the cat feces discussion until after we hear from Doug, if that's all right with the rest of you. The only other thing I know, I know, Gene, you're very eager to get on that subject, but well, patience, patience. The other thing is for all of you, I think we sent out a note, but the first Equity Task Force meeting will be Wednesday afternoon at one o'clock, so hopefully we will get a number of attendees on that call to start the ball rolling with community discussions. So there it is. All right, otherwise, until we get back to cats, let's, Doug, it's all you.
Well, I'm all about dogs. All right, Sue, would you like to pull up PowerPoint, please? All right, everybody see that? Hopefully. So we're here tonight to talk about your council goal number three, which is about housing. And then later this evening, we will talk about the urban renewals. I'm gonna talk a little bit about economic development, but then we'll have in our regular business session, a broader discussion about the urban renewal program. So Sue, next. So provided a series of questions for council members to consider as I go through this particular presentation. So that first one is how would council define the housing and economic development goal? Again, in this context, it's kind of combining the housing goal that you had, which is talking about affordability, transitional housing, workforce housing as examples. And then what is the council's vision for housing and economic development? And as I go through the presentation, we'll talk about what we've done, where we're at, and things that are on the horizon. The third one is what are the strengths and areas of improvement under housing and economic development? And then the all-important one, I think, is should we be focusing inward, or should we be focusing outward in partnerships in order to achieve the goals? Next is what programs would council like to prioritize based upon the thirty-seven plus or minus items? So we had in your packet, Attachment One, which had a list of forty-four. Some of these came up twice because they came out under different topic categories, but we have the opportunity to talk about that this evening. And then, you know, what does success look like in addressing housing and economic development? So I should note that Matt and I worked on putting this presentation together, so I'm, I'm basically the play-by-play, and Matt will provide color commentary as appropriate. Next, please. So we, as I noted, out of the five goals that you have, first one is promote development of housing affordability, and we use the word such as at the time that was put together, is houselessness, transitional housing, and workforce housing. And then, of course, the next goal we had was number four, was create and support an urban renewal plan and authority. As I mentioned earlier, we'll talk more about that later this evening. Next. So what have we been doing in regards to housing? So we did the downtown improvement plan, and for those of you who were here at the time and those who were not, there was a focus on trying to get additional housing opportunities in and around the downtown area by having that housing and help support the downtown businesses. So trying to create that eighteen-hour city where people are living, they can get out, they can walk, go to a restaurant, go to a boutique, get their services that they need within a walkable distance. Also then plays into the neighborhoods immediately north and south of downtown, because they play into that as well. So part of this one was working on housing along Second Street was the focus. We worked on and completed the R3 annexation, the high-density residential. So that is one where if you annex fifteen acres or more of land, that's net acreage, into the city, that ten percent of that acreage, acre and a half, has to be for high-density residential housing. At this point, we have not had any fifteen-plus acre annexations. There are a few properties that we originally identified that have had some conversations on that might annex, but they have not done that at this point. Accessory dwelling units, and so Senate Bill 1051 had the big piece where we rewrote our, Sue, we lost the PowerPoint. But that's okay. I have it on my big screen, so I can keep going. So we talked about accessory dwelling units in Senate Bill 1051, so we rewrote all of our accessory dwelling unit regulations. Then the legislature changed the law again, and we came back and we changed those to address parking. So that has been completed. We've actually seen an uptick. We're seeing more and more inquiries. We've actually had applications that have come in for accessory dwelling units. The one we just recently completed was the Riverfront Master Plan, and so you can remember in that, kind of to the west of River Street, is we've identified some additional housing opportunities. We did not need as much commercial. It was identified back in 2001 and 2002. And then we did the Community Development Block Grant, and this was for the manufactured housing. So we got $400,000 through the CDVG program through the state of Oregon. We worked on twenty-five-plus manufactured homes, did repairs for roofs, HVACs, systems, ADA ramps, new windows, fixed bathrooms, showers, sinks, and so forth. We also did the Second Street Commercial Regulations. And so that was one where we had standards that required you had to have a certain percentage lineal feed of commercial on Second Street, and we were losing inquiries that were coming in, because they didn't want to do commercial. They were looking to do residential, which placed back into the downtown improvement plan. And then recently, we completed the parking requirements for residential, and so that added another tool into the toolkit to pay an in lieu of fee for parking. House Bill 4006, that gets to, we are a rent burden community, so we are now on that timeline of every year, because we have more than twenty-five percent of our population that is rent burden. They're actually paying fifty percent or more of their income towards their housing costs. So we have to do annual reporting that basically starts in October of every year and then runs through February. As we do survey work, we hold a community meeting, we have to document all of the housing that we did the prior calendar year, submit that report to Department of Land Conservation and Development in Oregon, Oregon Housing. We did the housing needs analysis, so we completed that back in June. That got to council in August. So that set the stage of kind of where we're at today in regards to housing and where we need to go in the future. Keep in mind there, that report identifies that we should have been producing a little, about two hundred and two residential units a year based upon our population projection, and we were doing a little over a hundred. So there's a supply-demand issue. Sue, next slide, please. Okay, and then the next one. So as I've noted on that list, that's Attachment One in your packet this evening, we've got a lot of tasks, and there's a lot of things that are going on on housing. So the council has their goal. Housing Newburgh helped feed in to that list of thirty-seven plus or minus activities to consider. DLCD through the legislature has brought forward a bunch of housing initiatives. We'll get into the details on that. There's a workforce housing consortium. The mayor's participated in that. That's being led by SEDCorps, driven by businesses actually in town, starting with our healthcare retirement. But we're also be branching out, talking with our industrial employers as well. And so some of you probably heard me say in the past week, probably, given the staffing we have, we can do about two or three of these tasks off that list of thirty-seven plus or minus in any given year. And so that kind of, when you run the numbers, that's a twelve-to-eighteen-year timeline to kind of run through all of that list. So there becomes important about trying to prioritize what it is that we're going to focus on. We are also part of the Yamhill County Affordable Housing Commission, so that's a private nonprofit. I sit on the board for that, and so we coordinate with other communities within Yamhill County about housing affordability programs. Things we've got going on, they're underway. So construction excise tax. So I came back to you in March, and we tabled that discussion until the fall. It'll actually be coming back to you in October. As a corollary to that one, the Home Builders Association has raised questions about our SDC program and some modifications about when those SDCs get paid. So Engineering Department and I are working through that. That will come back in the fall as well. We've been working on the housing, vertical housing development zone in the downtown area. That will be coming back to the council. Right now, I'm looking at in the fall, probably in the October-ish timeframe as well. And then we did the Riverfront Master Plan. And so that has some additional medium-density and high-density residential, and then we have some mixed commercial that allows residential on the second floors and above. So what have we've got sitting out there on the horizon? So there are these four DLCD grants the city was awarded, so there was $155,000, and these address House Bill 2001, which is the middle housing program. And then there's also another portion of that, which is Housing Strategy Implementation Plan. And then there's an infrastructure-based time extension program. And so I'll show you a graph here in a moment. And so we've got the four of those. I'm currently working with consultants, putting together scope of work and grant documents with DLCD. Today, we sent out a request for qualification for the Housing Implementation Plan, and I'll get that information back next week, and we'll advance that timeline and that scope as well. All four of these have a little bit different timelines. The missing middle housing has two, two time triggers with it. The HNA and the IBIT are gonna have to be done this fiscal year, and the housing implementation needs to be done as well. So like, see, that I noted, we started those in July. We're in July right now, and we're working on all those. So this is the graph. Sue, next slide, please. Next. Next. There we go, the graph. So the blue line is the housing needs analysis. Originally, we're gonna start that in June. It's actually gonna be in July as we work through with DLCD. That project will be completed by the end of January of 2021. The infrastructure time-based extension request, and that's looking at infrastructure in areas immediately north of downtown, between downtown and the railroad tracks, and then south of downtown, between Hess Creek and Shahealan Creek, basically down to Twelfth or Thirteenth Street. And there we'll be looking at the deficiencies in infrastructure, transportation, sewer water, and storm to accommodate infill development for middle housing, duplexes, triplexes, quads, townhomes, and cluster housing development. And we have to have that material submitted in by December 31st. The Housing Implementation Plan, we have to have done by June 21st. I'll probably start that now, given conversations with the consultant. We'll probably be looking at September kickoff for that program. And then we have the code assistance, and this is the one that's broken into two. We have to deal with the duplexes. That has to be done by June 21st, I should say, June 30th of 2021. And then we have the other missing middle housing. That's the triplex, fourplex, cluster housing, and townhomes, and that has to be done by June 30th of 2022. Sue, next slide, please. So you've heard me mention, I always come back to this list, Attachment One in your packet, that thirty-seven plus or minus items. But these all dovetail into the community visioning program. And so in the community visioning program, we have Goal Three, which is improve housing affordability in Newburgh. So we talk about evaluating zone changes and fees and permitting processes, and those are things that are listed out in that list of thirty-seven. Incentives, so like the construction excise tax is one of those. What's also listed on that list is there are some other housing incentives that are in state statute that the council has not, or city has not adopted yet. We've done one. And then access to affordable housing, this one really ties to the Affordable Housing Commission and the trust fund. And within that program, we can do maintenance, improvements, repairs, windows, insulation, and so forth, but we have limited amount of funding for that activity within that particular fund. Next. So now we'll come turn to, you know, what's been completed. So we did the Economic Development Strategy. That was in 2016, and then we updated it in 2019 to align with the community visioning program. We did the Strategic Tourism Strategy, and so that, addressing the tourism component. But we also know from our economy is that the tourism sector is also the lowest-paying wage, which then dovetails back into the cost of housing and having housing that's affordable for those workers. We did the downtown improvement plan. So a lot of, there were ten big ideas that were embedded within that program. So we talk about infrastructure improvements, transportation improvements, infill development, and this ties back into the housing side as well, and trying to get housing on the upper floors. On the ECDev side, we also established the Visit Newburgh or Taste Newburgh program. Next. Then A Newburgh, the Community Visioning Program. You can see over on the right-hand side of your slide, there are ten action strategies that are listed. Some of those we're working on now. So the West End Mill District will be meeting with the Planning Commission later this week on that project. Catalyst Development, we're working on the Butler property across the street. So kind of the two big ones that we've started off with thus far, and we also did the parking stuff on Second Street to try to get more housing. Riverfront Master Plan, so with whatever may transpire with the mill site and redevelopment of that, that's a big opportunity that sits in front of the community, and, and now that we have the plan in place, Planning Commission, City Council will be having a joint meeting on Thursday. We'll be talking about the implementation, the various regulations and standards for that. Early on, we completed the Shahealan Valley Innovation Accelerator, so that's been up and running. We've had clients that have graduated out of that program. We have new clients coming in, and we have clients that we're mentoring in process today. We've also been working on strategic doing, which is a practice out of Purdue University, the Agile Lab. So we've actually done some of this in Newburgh, and we've also done it countywide. Next. Business retention, expansion, and recruitment. So this is an ongoing, all of you have heard me say, we've lost businesses because we have no place for them to expand. They don't, we don't have existing buildings to expand into, and we don't have a land supply for them to expand onto. But we still do our retention work, and so we do this activity in coordination with SEDCorps, which is the next one, is that ongoing coordination on activities. Yamhill County Economic Development Council, so we are a member of that. I sit on the board. And so this is the Yamhill County under contract with SEDCorps to provide economic development services. And so we've actually just had a meeting last week about using the strategic doing tool with that council to try to find some focus on some catalyst projects. And so part of this is pivoting, given the pandemic, instead of creating a strategic plan that goes up on the shelf, how can we break this down into small, biteable pieces that they're actionable, that can be done in six months, eight months or so, to move that group forward? Then we have the Mid Valley Economic Development Alliance, and so this is related to COVID-19. So we meet every week. The regional group meets as well. And so there's a couple of meetings a week that we're talking about the economy as it's related to COVID-19. Downtown Improvement Plan will be ongoing. Remember, that was a plan for twenty years. There's lots of actions under those ten big ideas, and we're starting to tick those off one by one. The Economic Development Strategy will be ongoing, so those are monthly meetings, sharing information with that group. We're also talking about how do we need to pivot, given COVID-19, and what do we need to focus on in the foreseeable future? And then the Riverfront Master Plan implementation, where a lot of that will be done by the end of the calendar year, but there will still be a lot of work to do with development and redevelopment activities. Next. Next one, Sue? There we go. So the Economic Opportunities Analysis. So that's something we're underway with right now. That's funded by the city, and we got a grant from DLCD for that program. We intend to bring to council either January or February the final documents for your consideration and acceptance. And that will help us identify, based on our population projections, what we're going to need for employment land, both on the commercial side and on the industrial side. Preliminary numbers show that, yes, we are deficient on the industrial side. We're still working through on the commercial side. And the final PSU population numbers just came out at the end of June, and so we've got to factor those into the early work we did on population numbers. Then we've got the Urban Renewal Plan and Report. And so I don't want to get into a lot of this, because we'll talk about it in the business session, but right now, we're on schedule bringing that forward to the council this spring. So actually, July 20th, we'll be bringing the feasibility study for your consideration. Next slide, please. So what's on the horizon on the economic development side? So we have to do what's called a public semi-public land analysis. So that's to look at the land need for city, county, state, CPRD, faith-based organizations, university, schools, Newburgh Public School plus the two private schools. What are their land needs over the next twenty years? We'll be kicking that off here later this month, and that project will be in the fall, before Christmas, we believe we'll have that work done. The Urban Growth Boundary Expansion, so all of this housing needs analysis, economic opportunities analysis, the public semi-public are all foundational pieces. Right now, I'm looking probably in the spring of 2021, is coming forward to council, having a discussion with the question of, do you want us to initiate an urban growth boundary expansion through the traditional Division 24 process? And it'll take three or four years to get through all of that, which would include doing all the analysis work, as well as addressing anything on any appeals that might end up before the Land Use Board of Appeals. Another component that people often don't think about for economic development, but it really is, is it's processing those current land use applications. I always say government does not create jobs. Private sector create jobs. We help facilitate them, with them to create those jobs. So every time we get a new application for a new subdivision or a partition or a commercial building, or the rare occasion where we get something for an industrial building, building, or the rare occasion where we get something for an industrial building, those are all directly aligned with economic development activities. Sue, next. So this brings us back to the list of questions that I initially started with. So, you know, how we council define housing economic development goal, what's your vision for housing and economic development, what are our strengths, what are our areas of improvement, considering what we've accomplished, what we're working on, and what's on the horizon? The question about focusing, is it inward, we just do it all ourselves, or do we outward, we partner? Programs, how would you like to prioritize? This kind of relates back to the housing, the 37 plus or minus items that are on that list, now knowing that things that we're currently working on and/or will be working on over the next couple of years. And what does success look like for housing and economic development? So with that, Mayor, I would turn it over to you.
All right, folks, questions or comments for Doug? I'll make, I'll make one comment, and I often quote this, so I hope it's correct, but I believe that every major economic development plan that's come out of the city of Newburgh in the last however long, 10 years, has cited its housing as either one of the deficiencies, or alternatively, it's something that we need to, for instance, make downtown viable, you need housing nearby. I know that the economic development strategy, one of the weaknesses is a lack of affordable housing, is stated in the body of the report. And the tourism strategy, as Doug mentioned, is great, except if we don't have people that can live in town and, and work for those businesses. So, so they're obviously interwoven very, very deeply, so there you go. Other, other questions or comments for Doug, folks? Okay. All right.
There's gotta be a question.
Yeah.
There's gotta be a question.
Anybody? All right, I will throw this out, and, and this is not necessarily to be a pain, but I will, I will throw this out. Based on 37 items, based on the workload in community development, based on the budget, based on deadlines or the cost of consultants, I cannot give any direction, nor can I answer any of the questions, to be honest. I'd love to see a proposal from staff saying what they think could be accomplished, because honestly, I, I mean, I do this work all the time, and I still wouldn't know where to begin. So that would be, that's my suggestion, so, for what it's worth.
And we've got a long list of, well, Doug shares with me his list of actions and, and you know, how that looks in terms of the planning of that, the actual timeframe to accomplish those things, and certainly all those things are, those 37 items and all the work is well planned out. And so I don't know if that's helpful to come back with, or to share more of the sequential timing of things and think about, you know, what moves up or down, and you know, that, but I think a lot of this is predicated on, you know, step by step, you know, that it all fits together and, you know, gets us to the end goal, which, you know, hopefully is an urban renewal authority, you know, an improved downtown economy and a broader business, you know, improvements in terms of the economic development, you know, more affordable housing, and some of those things, I mean, I just, it would definitely be helpful, and I'll shut up, because I saw a hand come up, you know, it would be helpful for us, I think, to get some feedback on the broader goals of that, and maybe, you know, you all feel that we've got the direction, but it would definitely be helpful, given the council priority of this.
Was there a hand? Anybody?
It was Elise, just as my child starts screaming, but that, what Dan just said was along the lines of what I was going to mention, of just, I would love to see, I really appreciate the, the presentation, Doug, and I would love to see some sort of sequential, your, your recommendation as to how we approach the 37 items, and maybe some end up not panning out. And as for inward versus outward, you know, I think like, I guess I'm more of a believer of taking the opportunities that are coming, so looking for partnerships that are presenting in that moment and capitalizing on them when they come.
All right, thank you, anyone else?
Yeah, I guess, I, I was thinking along the same lines, is that that looks like a huge list, and certainly overwhelming when I look at it, and I guess it would help for me, conceptually, to see what a timeline looks like from the experts, so what pieces feel to Doug like they take a big bite out of that? Are there, are there pieces of that that seem like they will give us more bang for our buck? And I'd like to, to hear about that. And I, I agree with Elise, that I would definitely like to see us looking outward, to see what kind of resources we have on the outside, but I do think that we have some inward stuff that we need to look at, particularly, I know Doug has talked about in the past, making space for our current businesses to expand, and how that's been lacking. And I think when we, you know, I mean, it's like chicken or egg, like when we allow our businesses to expand, then we're looking at more workforce, we're looking at more housing, and I'd like to see us start talking about the different levels of housing that we do provide, and making sure that we're focused really on sort of, you know, our industries really do focus on people who serve our community for small wages, and how we're sort of catering to that bigger population first, before we start looking at catering to the populations that are buying more expensive homes, are looking at housing that are, that are more expensive. So I guess that's kind of like the way I, I am conceptualizing, and maybe, and I guess I just want to hear from Doug, if that is something that makes sense, is sort of catering to that bigger population right now, so that we can then expand from there, and what parts of that 37, that list of 37, takes bigger bites out of that issue?
That's something that I can put together, definitely. I've had a conversation with the Affordable Housing Commission, and I will actually be talking with them at their meeting this month, and we'll be talking about prioritizing this list, and so that will be one feedback loop that we'll have from one of your commissions to help kind of guide this discussion about what's important. And councillor, yes, it, you know, what are the things that have the biggest bite? I will talk with the Affordable Housing Commission about that. I know when we talked about it the last time before the pandemic, was that they were looking about, well, housing on religious institution property, because there are some churches who would like to do some things. They started from an approach of, well, we already have state mandated things, so those four grants, those are things that we're gonna have to do, is those are already kind of a given, but what else off of that list of 37 that's more local, doesn't say not having partnerships, but it's more local, that there has more of a local direct influence, and maybe on some different, maybe shorter timeframes? So I can start to frame those conversations that way, and bring some material back to you.
You know, I think to add to that a little bit, Doug, I think if, you know, if there are items on the, the list of 37 that could be easily farmed out, say, to an outside consultant to get a few knocked out, I would love to know which ones those were, and how much that might cost. And then, and the other thing would be to, to look at, you know, given the current budget, what you have for staffing, and whether or not there's, you know, a plan to, to really focus on housing in the future, because, you know, from my opinion, they go hand in hand with economic development, absolutely. And so, thus, you know, force for workforce housing, or any sort of subsidized housing through CET and all that would, would be helpful, so.
That's what I was gonna, outside, I think we should push, we don't build houses, right? So the more partners we can get, the better, because I think what we need to build is housing that are not going to be built by your traditional developer. But we have to be a great partner in that. And then my, my other thought was, I'd like to see us do something that actually ends up as housing, not, not just, like, what's the thing we can do that actually brings housing? That's not a report, that's not a, a study, that's not, I, I want to see housing on the ground, and I want to see it soon. I've been on this council for 12 years, Rick and I met 13 years ago, 14 years ago, talking about affordable housing, and we're still just saying the word a lot, and we're not actually accomplishing anything, and I'm tired of saying the word. It's like, I'm just tired of it. I want to see earth move.
Well councillor, I think, just on that particular thread, the Workforce Housing Consortium is one that is actually talking about what, how do we position ourselves so we can actually do a project to provide housing for those that are in that 80% to 120% of median family income? So that's one particular example. Mayor, yes, we come back and look at consultants and what they can and can't do. I know a conversation I had with one of my consultants last week was looking at the housing implementation plan, and that starts with what's in our housing needs analysis. And so there was that list, a short list of things to focus on, and there was a long list of things, maybe in the future. When then, when I shared with them, well, here's the list of 37, they kind of said, oh, well, what are we supposed to focus on first? And so some of that discussion with that committee would be, again, kind of prioritizing, what's important? What can we focus on over the course of the next five years, and what you might do in year one, or year two, three, four, or five? Again, trying to break this down into more manageable pieces, but things that also gets to councillor bacon, it's not producing another report, but it's driving towards, we're actually getting product on the ground.
Yeah, speaking of which, Doug, can you tell us what's going on with Crestview Crossing? And, and they're, they had planned to deed restrict 12 to 15 units, can you tell us what's going on with that?
The latest conversation I had with them is, they were thinking that to do the deeds restrictions, if the construction excise tax is implemented, that they could not do both. Now, that doesn't mean the conversation is done, that's just, they came back to me, and that was their particular position or viewpoint, and so those conversations will continue. We still have time, right now, they're doing the, the site prep work, they did the clearing, they're gonna start doing mass grading, they're working on public improvement permits, so there's some time yet before they actually get to the final phase of their PUD, but it's something that's on my list, Mayor.
I'd just like to underscore as what Denise just said, that's the chance to get 12 to 15 units of deed restricted housing tied to income. Just to put it in perspective, the, the city currently has incentives for two houses per year that we will waive SDCs. The thought of getting 12 to 15 is a number of years of that. So I think it is vitally important as to, that we push it, and if I recall, that was stated in a public hearing, and I actually had a discussion with the developer prior to it going in, that that would be a component part. So I hope, I hope that, that that can go through.
Still working on it, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, yeah, and I'd, I'd love to know, you know, keep abreast of how that conversation goes, and, yeah, so thank you. All right, anything else for Doug? All right, Doug and Dan, do we, have we given you enough to, to go with, or?
I, I would say my takeaway from this is, I'm gonna be going to the Affordable Housing Commission, we're gonna be having a talk, discussion about priorities. I'll bring back some information about a schedule, some of these things might be out in year seven or eight, there's other things that are gonna be more important, keep an eye on partnerships, keep a focus on product on the ground. I mentioned we've got this work for, so I've got, starting of a framework of a box, there's gonna be some more discussions I need to have with people in order to bring something back to you that's fleshed out enough, that makes some sense. The whole issue the mayor brought up about what consultants could or could not do, that's gonna take some conversations, a lot of the consultants right now are busy with all of these DLCD grants, so kind of, some of their bandwidth is taken up, and then our own internal staffing and our capabilities to address that, and that's conversation Dan and I will need to have, and Matt?
And just a reminder for the council, in the budget, we did approve hiring associate planner, I think it was, for specifically knowledge of the housing, and the budget year just started, we did just post the planning manager position, which is arguably a higher priority, and so then we're, we're working on getting the, the other position posted. You know, obviously, I think that, you know, if you're putting a lot of eggs in that basket, that that individual's gonna run with a lot of the housing work, it's gonna take a while, and it's gonna, you know, once we even hire this individual, we're gonna have to get him up to speed and all those things, and so it's a long-term strategy, but I'm sympathetic, or I'm hearing very much that we need to turn dirt, and we need to get some things done beyond just the planning stuff, and I think part of that planning manager position also can help Doug, along with the consultants, of getting some of those things moved off his plate, because his plate is, is overflowing, you know, he's, I'm not sure how many helpings he's got going, but more than one, so we're working on, on some help there.
So actually, so I, see, I've already started the timeline of all activities and things, so it's work in process.
All right, very good, anything else then? Are we, we good with that for the moment? All righty, thank you, thanks Doug.
You're welcome.
All right, now, Gene, can I give you the, the floor to discuss, to introduce our next subject?
What subject is that?
I think it has to do with felines.
Yes, felines are a house animal, and a constituent of mine, Sue Osborne, approached me as I was on my daily walk, stating that her neighbor, she's spoken to the neighbor, please do not, well, first of all, Sue is a gardener, as I am also a gardener, I like to dig in the dirt, and what I like to find in the dirt is more dirt, not cat feces, and Sue feels the same way, she's spoken to her neighbor, but she also noticed that we don't seem to have any, what's the word, code about this, and she brought us material from Portland, and I think it's a valid thing that neighbors should, should do that, care about each other, keep your cat in the house, in the litter box.
All right, let's see, Truman, do you want to weigh in on this subject of codes for cats?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As, as been said, there is no general code provision about cats at large, there is, and I'm reading from the city code, in chapter 6.05, there's a provision for animals at large that states it is unlawful for any person, et cetera, controlling, owning or controlling or having custody of any wild or domestic animal or fowl, and then it says cats and dogs accepted, to permit or allow the same to run at large within the corporate limits of the city. So there is a general animal at large provision in 6.05, but it does accept cats and dogs. And then in chapter 6.10, which is specifically related to dogs, there are some provisions about dogs at large, but there is nothing anywhere in the code that would address cats being at large.
Thank you, Dan, did you want to?
You know, I guess, from the, the feline, I'm, I'm not as familiar, and maybe this is an Oregon thing, I, I did while I was at the coast, I, I think I may have shared this with a couple of you, that I saw a couple walking their cats, on a rainy day, the cats were wearing cat raincoats, and so, you know, maybe that's an Oregon thing, but I'm not as familiar with cats as, as I am with dogs, and cleaning up after those. Typically, in cities that I've worked in, there has been a waste collection, kind of a, you know, pet waste ordinance that mandates that people clean up after their pets, and certainly, obviously, you know, this cat, it sounds like it's roaming in someone else's yard, so maybe it's not being walked with the raincoat or not, but it's not being walked, and so that may be a harder task, but certainly I would think that, you know, also, one of the things that we have in Colorado, where I recently came from, you know, there's a requirement, if there's an animal off-leash, that it had to be under voice command, and certainly, again, that's probably a dog, but, you know, there are some But, um, you know, there are some options we can pursue, I think. And, um, certainly the reason for a lot of that is, um, getting along with others and, and other pets, but also, uh, the fact that, uh, animal feces is, uh, or has toxins in it that, you know, shouldn't get into the water is, is not such a good thing. And so, um, that's the intent of, of bagging feces and, and getting it off trails. It's also, it's kind of gross, you know, and you step in or have something like that just sitting there. So I think that was, or generally the intent of some of those ordinances, um, as we are joined by an animal, a cat no less. But, um, this is, uh, maybe your, your cat has some, some comments on the issue, but, um.
He's heard the conversation and decided he needed to be brought into the conversation.
Here's perk.
There's Gilbert, so.
That does bring up another point that Ms. Osborne had, and that is, and which was very of interest, great interest to Merrill Kunkel, who will be running to take my place. And that is cats eating birds and destroying the environment through that, uh, depopulation of birds. And so that's another aspect to it, that if we have goals for sustainability and want to support sustainability, then that's another issue. It's not just feces.
Okay. Um, that is true. And Sue, I don't know if you've all got it, but Sue did provide a, a letter. Um, and I don't, Sue, did that get distributed to everybody?
No, because I didn't get it until 3:25.
Okay. All right. So she did provide a letter as well, but Jean summarized well, um, and you guys will have that as well. All right. Um, so what is your pleasure, folks? I mean, obviously this would take some staff time to develop a, some kind of an ordinance. You know, at least as Dan said, um, something at the very minimum would be the, you know, animal waste generally. Um, so what are, what are your thoughts?
My first question would be who's going to enforce it? That, that would be my first question. Cause if, if we don't have someone to enforce it, it's just going to create more issues. Not that that's a reason we shouldn't do things. But it's a question.
And I think, uh, go ahead Truman. Yeah, sorry.
No, you go ahead, Dan. You can, I'll follow you.
Well, I was just going to, uh, say from the enforcement side that typically, um, it's, uh, you know, cities that have, uh, you know, they're thinking about on the trails or those kinds of things. And then obviously we have trails in the community and, and don't necessarily have enforcement, uh, responsibility. We don't own them. And so I think that would need to be, uh, if we're doing it here and thinking about trails, uh, from a dog waste standpoint, it would probably be, uh, incumbent on, on partnership there. Um, and I think arguably, you know, if nothing else, it's also from an enforcement side. It's potentially giving someone a stick and, you know, maybe that's not always the best thing because sometimes people hit each other over the head with sticks. But, um, that's, that would be part of the discussion for council, I think, if we did some research.
Yeah. The enforcement question too is always an interesting one because, you know, as we just went through the discussion with, uh, wearing face coverings. Um, one of the big hangups was how were we going to enforce it? Well, basically we're not going to. So, um, anyway, but that's something, you know, like you say, it's, uh, you know, leaving, leaving animal poop around is not a good thing generally. I think you could safely say that. So. Um, so anyway, what's your, what's your pleasure, folks? Do you want to have, uh, staff to vote a little time or, or Truman, did you, I'm sorry Truman, did I cut you off? I'm sorry.
Um, no, I was just going to, uh, I, I think the enforcement question is a good question. And I would point out that, um, I believe it was in 2014, the city eliminated, the police department eliminated the animal control officer position as a, um, cost-saving measure when we were having some budget issues. So there really is no one currently in the city, um, who would be in a position to enforce this. And if this was something that the council was interested in, um, it wouldn't simply be a matter of a code change, which frankly would be the easy part. It would be trying to determine, uh, a process and, and dedicating resources for enforcement, uh, which, um, I would suggest would be the more difficult portion of this.
All right. Thoughts, folks?
So is there any way maybe we could start with just like a campaign, like have a campaign about animal poop? Like please be kind to your neighbor kind of thing. Start there and hope. I know it's funny, um, hope for the people to take it seriously or, um, you know.
I hate to write a rule. I'll channel, uh, councillor, uh, or former councillor, uh, Johnson and say, you know, the metrics on that are, are something that you can definitely define, right? You're seeing less poop, but, um, you know, I guess I would just suggest maybe we devote some time if you're, if there is a will from the council to just to research some options. And certainly we can have in that, an option for, um, a campaign. And certainly that's, that's relatively easy and, and low cost to, to try to, you know, appeal to people's goodwill and, and, you know, their husbandry, animal husbandry instincts. But, um, you know, maybe we do that and, and look for whether there is an increase or decrease or, you know, some impact to that and go from there.
I think an overall campaign, uh, about being kind to your neighbor in every respect would, uh, be a good thing. And I think it would, um, lessen a lot of the calls that we get here on a daily basis.
Is this something that a citizen group could, could do? Sue Osborne also mentioned another citizen with this concern, Becky Wallace, that she was going to be expressing it at some point. But, um, yeah, some kind of citizens encouraging other citizens.
I think we could, you know, and certainly, um, you know, I think if nothing else, we, like what we've done, I was going to talk about in the city managers report, some of the effort around masks and, and the mask up Newburgh, uh, campaign, we, we created the flyers and then are providing them to rent to businesses to put up. And it seems like a lot of them are, are printing them out and posting them. And so, you know, we could provide the infrastructure and allow the citizens to kind of run with it.
All right. So that sound good, folks? Does that, is that clear enough? We got thumbs up. I'm seeing thumbs up around. All right. And Dan and Truman, does that make enough sense to start with?
Seems fine.
All right. All right. Great. Um, all right. Moving along. All right. I think that's it for the, uh, for the work session. Let's, uh, let's reconvene at 7:05. Everybody go say hello to their cats and dogs in the next five minutes.
I'll reassure my dog.
All right, folks. Uh, I think I've got 7:05. Are we, uh, ready to go, Sue?
Sure. Um, I have a note in the chat box that, uh, Elise had to jump off. Okay. So councillor Pirros.
Here.
Um, is Elise coming back, Rick?
I couldn't tell. I saw the same note, so I'm not sure.
Okay. All right. Uh, councillor Martinez Plankarte.
Present.
Uh, Mayor Rogers.
Present.
Councillor Bacon.
Here.
And councillor Finley.
Here.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, all present with the exception of councillor, you're now Holloman. I'll just leave her blank for now if she comes back.
All right. Thank you. All right. Uh, so this meeting, the city council business session for July 6th is now called to order. Uh, let's move to the pledge of allegiance, please. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. So thank you. Um, first item of business, number four A on your program. Um, the election of a council president. Um, nominations are now open. Do I hear of any nominees? Okay. All right. Well, I will make a nominee. I will nominate, uh, I would like to nominate Stephanie Finley for the position of council president, uh, for the remainder of this year. And then for a reminder, folks, we do this, uh, we do this every year. So there are chances to, uh, alternate and rotate, but, uh, like to nominate Stephanie Finley. Any?
Second.
Oh, we got a second. Okay. Um, any, and that's from Jules. Um, so any, any other nominees?
I had the same.
What's that? Sorry, Jean.
I had the same thoughts.
Okay. Very good. All right. Um, any, uh, any other nominees? All right. Uh, we will call for the question then. All in favor of Stephanie Finley as council president signify by raising your left hand. There it is. And that passes unanimously. All right, Stephanie, thank you. Thank you very much. And thank you all. All right. Next, uh, city managers report. Dan, please.
Okay. Um, I will try to make this relatively brief. Um, just wanted to highlight a few things, uh, to COVID-18 activities and, um, you know, other items. Um, as you are well aware, and hopefully those in the community are. Um, the governors ordered masks to be worn inside, uh, public buildings and, uh, in places indoors. And so we have issued a mask order for our staff and for those, uh, who are visiting city hall or working in, uh, our city facilities. So that's city staff as well as contractors and, and other folks. Um, so we're trying to make sure we're as compliant as possible with the mask order and, and definitely trying to also promote that. As I mentioned before, uh, we created, we, I should say, Lacy has created, I, I told Lacy earlier that I'm going to take credit for her work, but I won't do that. Um, she's doing great work and has created some great flyers for us. Um, the mask up Newburgh campaign, uh, as I mentioned, we provided those flyers to, uh, businesses through the chamber, through the. And I, uh, over the weekend saw a lot of them in businesses. Uh, so, you know, great to see, those are messages in English and in Spanish. So hopefully as the numbers unfortunately have increased in the state and, and in Yamhill County, hopefully that, uh, campaign will have some impact and we'll start to see those reduce again. Related to, uh, the, uh, whole COVID situation and what seems to be a way of life these days, um, we did submit for reimbursement. I think I might've mentioned that previously, uh, we submitted for reimbursement under the CARES Act to the state. Uh, we received the reimbursement of 152,000. Um, and that was for activities, uh, that are essentially, uh, related to preparation, related to, uh, some of the protective equipment, uh, expansion, expenses, if I can say that word, expenses and, uh, things that we've had to do to sort of gear up for COVID. And then also specifically, I think we were able to get some of the, or get the money, uh, reimbursed from our motel voucher program, uh, through YCAP and one, well, through the state that we did the vouching through YCAP, to be clear. We are looking hopefully for the second round of CARES Act reimbursement that we might be able to reimburse some of the, uh, assistance programs, the Berg and the Sport Local Challenge. So, uh, fingers crossed there, but want to say thank you to those staff who've been involved. Stuff like a heavy lift, a lot of paperwork in a very short period of time, uh, bit of a fire drill and, um, definitely appreciate that, uh, that effort. But it's 152,000 is important for our budget these days. Well, any day. Speaking of the budget, I just wanted to note, uh, non-COVID, uh, segment of, of updates that happy fiscal year. Um, I know Matt's excited. And so, uh, we are, as I mentioned before, also we are posting positions, um, you know, things that were approved in the budget we're, we're moving forward on. So it kind of gives us a, a chance to renew some things that we were working on, um, priorities, hopefully of the council that we're able to kind of get moved to the next year's, uh, worth of, of planned activities. Uh, so hopefully we will, uh, be successful in, uh, some of those recruitments, fingers crossed. And, uh, we'll have some, some new blood in, in some of the priority areas. Uh, wanted to also mention specifically around the fiscal part of the House, we have a, an intern, uh, who's with us for the summer. Uh, Ainsley, who is, uh, with the city, well, remotely with the city as everyone seems to be. But she's working through a partnership of, uh, the Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA, and engaging local government leaders, EFLGL. Uh, those two organizations had a program for, uh, people in, uh, these graduate programs. And so Mika's in a Carnegie Mellon University Masters of Public Policy Program. Uh, she lives, uh, regionally in Milwaukee, but, uh, so she's home for the COVID, I guess, and summer. And, um, so we're able to take advantage of her knowledge and her passion for municipal finance. Not everyone's passionate about that. I think Matt can probably tell you, but, um, she wanted to pursue a project with the city. And, um, we're working with her on exploring program-based budgeting. And, uh, that, hopefully that kind of a tool can help us explain the budget in a more, um, I guess, a helpful way. A, uh, a way that will help, uh, us to identify our expenditures, uh, for the layperson out there, the people who are not finance experts and understand, um, what things cost and to really see, uh, measurable change in, in allocations based on the program. So hopefully, uh, as we go down that path, Mika is going to be super helpful and we'll make some strides this year on that project. On a few other notes, I just wanted to share some training that I have received over the last few weeks. Um, I was able, uh, thanks to, uh, Twelton Valley Fire and Rescue was able to attend a session that they put on with their staff on, uh, inclusion, unconscious bias and diversity. Uh, it was a Zoom event, but, um, I went in person masked up and, and safely physically distanced. But, uh, was able to participate in that and it was really interesting training, um, a three-hour discussion. What they do is have, um, three different stations persist, participate remotely. They had several of their, uh, support staff as well. And so a lot of people on screens, um, all kind of talking about, uh, some of the unconscious, unconscious bias, they, uh, perceive and, you know, sort of working through some exercises related to that, um, seemed timely. And my intent was really to, uh, see, evaluate the training for our use possibly. And, um, I thought I was impressed. I thought it was, it was well-received by their staff. And, and it seemed like, you know, given that they have, TBFNR has a core value of inclusion, that it seemed to be, uh, really well done, uh, and fitting with that value for them. I also was able to, through ELG, participate in a thing called, uh, How To Be An Act ally. And, um, this one was really, uh, a good list of activities that individuals can do, um, to, you know, essentially support equity in an organization from whatever position that they're in and, you know, kind of identified a lot of the, um, the ways to do that and, and, um, some tips and tricks and things of that nature. So I thought it was really helpful. Um, I was also able to, in a non-training sense, I, I did talk to Rob Bacon in Dundee about the renewal of police services. Uh, so this agreement, uh, we sort of think was sunsetting, but apparently Rob was like, oh no, it's no big deal. We, we can keep going. We're going to rewrite the agreement slightly, um, or slightly changing it, um, and get that renewed and, and before the two councils soon. I think there's no intention of separating, but, um, and, and every intention of continuing the service, but, um, it was time to have an agreement. And, and we've done that and we're going to write up those changes and get them over to Rob for his approval and then for the councils. Also was able to meet with the Newburgh Sustainability Group, the resident-led group, uh, for introductions and, uh, talk about some of their goals and the, uh, the sort of list of priorities that they put together, uh, something we had talked about in the work session discussion with council before on sustainability was working with that group. Uh, what we agreed would be. What we agreed would be probably an important first priority, first step was trying to work on a sustainability, what the city can do and what the residents can do and how we can advance sustainability in our community broadly. And so I think there are going to be some follow-up meetings and discussions on that. And I am now a proud participant in the email dialogue of that group. And I'll probably pop in on some of the meetings in the future. And I think we have actually started to form an employee sustainability group again, and I'm just trying to figure out exactly who's on that and leading that. But starting to try to get that group formed up to have some discussions internally as well. This Thursday afternoon and Friday morning, I'm going to be participating in the Oregon City and County City County Management Association Conference. They're doing an online Zoom conference. So curious to sort of remotely meet some peers in the state and, and possibly network, however awkward that may be, and, and learn. And so, you know, there'll be some topics that are COVID-related along with probably, I think I saw something around diversity, equity and inclusion and just general management leadership. So hopefully learn a few things in the process. I did want to highlight two other things. One, the census, just to continue to harp on that or to remind folks. It's still, the count is still ongoing. I think at this point, there are the folks coming into the community, enumerators being trained to come into the community and interview folks who did not participate online. But just to kind of give the tally, Newburgh's response rate so far is at 68.4%. Just for reference sake, Oregon's response rate is 64.3, so we're above that. Yamhill County is at 65.9, so we're also above that. But just for a little bit of competitiveness, we are a little bit below McMinnville. They're at 68.9%. So half a percent above us. So definitely would encourage residents to participate when folks knock on their door and to provide the census information. It's super important for not just city, but for nonprofits and for schools and all kinds of other agencies in the community. The last thing I wanted to highlight was, I had already mentioned the planning manager position. That just went live today. The Assistant City Manager position, I think is going to go live tomorrow. And that, those two positions will sort of have a month out there on the, you know, on the internet, I guess. You know, trying to entice people. So we're going to all work our networks and I'll encourage the council as well. If you have folks who are in your network who might be interested in applying for either of those positions. The folks that, it used to be Waldron, but our consultant with Waldron is now with the Novak Consulting Group and still has our contract, but Novak has that position. And so people can apply on the Novak site or through ICMA, I think, and a number of other posted places that that job will be posted for the Assistant City Manager. And then the planning manager is live on the city's page and will be on governmentjobs.com. So I encourage people to apply. They're both, I think, this is an exciting time. This is the pitch, right? The elevator pitches is a super exciting time to work for the city and these are really exciting jobs. There are people who take those jobs are going to have their hands on a lot of the near future and the hopefully long-term future of the community and be able to really have a direct impact on a lot of things and a lot of people's lives. So definitely encourage people to apply. And that's that.
All right. Any questions for Dan, folks? All right, Dan, thank you. I don't see Sue right there, but yeah, what about the issue tracker? Do we have anything on there?
I don't think we added anything, but I know we had talked a little bit about the issue tracker, and I'm blanking unfortunately on, on it, but all that's on it right now, economic development and the flag. And I know we have talked about the flag, but it's still on there.
We need to, we need to talk more about the flag. We
I think we're just going to get a box of crayons and we can figure it out, right?
That's right. But wouldn't a flag be, wouldn't that be a great present for like outgoing, like counselors and planning commission people and stuff like, wouldn't that be cool?
Yeah.
Don't, don't tell, don't tell Patrick that. Don't let so, all right.
I don't think there's anything new on the issue tracker though.
All right, thank you. And I don't see Sue, but Sue, are you there? Because we're wondering about public comment. There you are. I'm sorry, you're muted. There you are.
We're having some technical difficulties. Doug, I cannot seem to bring Keith or Kristen on, and you are signed in on the City of Newburgh account. Can you try? Okay, now public comment. No, I have not received any. And that's it.
Okay, and no one on the line and no one in person?
No one in person. So just so you're aware, Dan, did you talk about HB 4212?
I did not, but I don't know if you want to or if you want Truman to, or if you want me to, but.
I can. HB 4212 was part of the kitchen sink bill that passed out of the legislature when they had their quick three-day session. So it, it had some provisions in there under, for the public, Oregon Public Meetings Law that did not require cities to provide physical space for people to attend. And so I am actually upstairs in the second floor conference room right now because we chose to, to go with the law. It's in effect until 30 days after the governor's state of emergency ends. And Truman, I'm going to ask you to pick it up from there. I got to shut the door because the janitor's here to vacuum.
I don't really have much to add beyond what Sue said. It's a temporary fix to deal with the emergency situation for the pandemic that somewhat loosens the public meetings requirement, still requires the public to be able to observe electronically, but does not require a physical presence.
And then we did create, I think, Lacey created some instructions for participation, how to log into Zoom, how to do and actually tell us whether someone wants to provide written or verbal comment. And so those have been posted as well. So we're trying to make sure we encourage people to participate, but also mindful of the disease transmission opportunities and those kinds of things that I think was the intent of the law.
All right, very good. Well, yes, and we'll underscore that. People, if you're out there and you want to make public comment, do not hesitate. There are ways to do so. Written, you know, you can phone it in, however. So email works. So there you are.
And just so everyone's aware, one of the tools that Lacey created, which I will totally admit, I do not understand how that works, is a flyer with a QR code. So I've taped it up on the thing for City Hall facing outwards and I've put it up at the post office. So apparently you just have to walk up to that with your smartphone and scan it or take a picture of it and you can send a public comment in that way. Okay, all right.
Awesome. Thank you. All right, moving on. Item 7A on your agenda. This is the consent calendar. Would anyone like additional information on the consent calendar item? Hearing none. Stephanie?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I would like to move that we approve the consent calendar.
Do we have a second?
Second.
And Jules with a second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by raising your left hand. All opposed, same sign. Looks like that passes 5-0. All right, moving along. We're onto a public hearing. All right, which means I need to find my script. All right, this is a quasi judicial land use public hearing. And it is number ordinance 20202864, an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan map designation for low-density residential to medium-density residential and zoning map designations from low-density residential to medium-density residential for Yamhill County Tax Lot 3218, that's 02901. And a comprehensive plan map designation from commercial to medium-density residential and is own changed from neighborhood commercial to R2 for property located at 717 North College Street, Yamhill County Tax Lot 3218-03100. The public here is now open. The testimony procedure, we'll hear from proponents, opponents, and then rebuttal from the proponent if there is need for any. Now, folks, if I could ask for a call for abstention, bias, ex parte contact and objections to jurisdiction. All right, hearing none. The city attorneys report or announcements, please.
Certain announcements are required before the commencement of a quasi judicial land use hearing. This hearing deals with a land use decision of a comp plan map and zoning map amendment for 717 North College Street. The announcement required by the Oregon Revised Statutes, ORS 197.763, is as follows. The applicable substantive criteria for the decision are listed in Exhibit A to Ordinance 2864, which begins on page nine of the RCA ordinance in the electronic version. Testimony, arguments and evidence must be directed toward the criteria described above or other criteria in the plan or land use regulation that you believe applies to this decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties, an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. The applicant, who has the burden of proof, may have at least seven days after the record is closed to submit final written argument. At the close of the testimony portion of the hearing, the applicant will have to decide if the applicant wishes to submit further written argument. The ORS 197.763 definitions are as follows. Argument means assertions and analysis regarding the satisfaction or violation of legal standards or policy believed relevant by the proponent to a decision. Argument does not include facts. Evidence means facts, documents, data or other information offered to demonstrate compliance or non-compliance with the standards believed by the proponent to be relevant to the decision. If the applicant wishes to make a submittal, no further deliberation shall take place tonight. If the applicant waives that right, the council may proceed with deliberation. And Mr. Mayor, that's the initial legal announcement.
Thank you very much. All right. And now the staff report, I think Keith.
Yes, thank you. Hope everybody is having a good evening. My name's Keith Leonard. I'm an associate planner here with the City of Newburgh, and I will be presenting this comprehensive plan and zoning map amendment for 717 North College Street. And there's also a parcel just to the north. I'd like to enter in all the exhibits and attachments into the public record along with RCA. Next slide, please. This is the location. It's just north of East Illinois Street and west of North College Street. The parcels outlined there in blue, there are two homes just to the north. The smaller parcel is also used as an access easement. This is a recorded access easement for the benefit of the two properties to the north of the subject properties. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned, we have a comprehensive plan map and zoning map amendment, 717 North College Street. This is a larger parcel. The comprehensive plan amendment would go, take the property from commercial to medium-density residential. And for the zoning map amendment, that would change the C1 neighborhood commercial to R2 medium-density residential. This is the tax lot I mentioned, 2901. This is currently master plan for low-density residential. It would take that designation to medium-density residential and then zoning map would be amended from R1 low-density to R2 medium-density. The applicable criteria is 15.302.030A3, and that's in our development code. The property owner is Dr. Holvik. He had a veterinarian clinic there for a number of years. It's been vacant since. There has been mention of a possible duplex development on the property. For duplexes to be developed within the R2, the way our code is, is written is that you have to have a total of, well, actually, let me back up. I believe that they're going to take this, they're going to be doing a partition. So I'm not going to get too, too, too much into the woods in that one. But they are looking at duplex development. The planning commission unanimously approved the resolution 2020356, and that was recommending approval of this comprehensive plan map and zoning map amendment. Next slide, please. So here's the current comprehensive plan map. You'll notice that to the north, you have low-density residential and the smaller partial has that comprehensive plan designation of low-density residential. Then you have the commercial kind of surrounded in a sea of high-density residential and medium-density residential. Next slide, please. And here's the zoning map. And as I mentioned, you have R1 to the north as, as well as the small, smaller parcel with access easement. And then you have R3 to the west. There's the C1 parcel and then further south is R2. So what this would do is, would create some contiguous R2 zone property. Next parcel, please, or next slide. So for the commercial land use analysis, we look back at the most recent comprehensive plan map amendment that affected commercial, the commercial land use designation. This created 1.95 acres or left 1.95 acres of commercial designated land that we still needed. Then the conversion to commercial to medium-density residential would take that 1.95 acres that's currently available and reduce it down to 1.47. Next slide, please. This is looking at the population forecast from 2017 to 2067. We're looking at about doubling our population here in 2067. I believe that this works out to be a regular increase throughout the years. There's no reduction. We're just looking at higher population as we go. So the need for, for additional housing is there. Next slide, please. For the residential analysis, we looked at the last amendment to affect medium-density land. So with this change, you'd have, we have a surplus of 84 acres and that would be reduced down to 83.91 acres. And then for the medium-density residential, we currently have a deficit of 52 acres. This would reduce our deficit of commercial down to about 51.43. Next slide, please. So these are the criteria. We have three criteria that we look at. We review the Newburgh Comprehensive Plan and the state land use goals. Along with that, we want to make sure that there's plenty of public services and facilities to serve that property. And then the final criteria is looking at the state transportation planning role. Next slide. So for the Newburgh Comprehensive Plan and State Planning Goals, we have 14 planning goals. There's actually, I believe, 19 state goals, but a lot of those apply toward the coastal areas. So they wouldn't be applicable for, for us being so far inland. So for, we, we determined that there were seven goals, M, A, B, E, H and I and K, I through K, I'm sorry. And then seven goals that were applicable, including C, D, F, G, and then L through N. We also looked for any conflicts between the map amendments and the comprehensive plan and the state goals. And we did not determine there were any, any conflicts. Next slide, please. So here's the utilities. What we have out there is an eight-inch waterline, 21-inch wastewater line and a 12-inch stormwater line. We had our We had our engineering department take a look at this. They didn't raise any red flags. So the property is, will be able to be served with adequate utilities and services. Next slide, please. And the state transportation planning role. So as the property is zoned today, you would expect 19 a.m. peak hour trips to be generated by this use, and then 21 p.m. peak hour trips. With the change to the land use, this would create 6 a.m. peak hour trips and then 6 p.m. peak hour trips. What this does is reduce the number of trips by 13 for the a.m. peak hour trips, and additional 15 would be reduced for the p.m. peak hour trips. So what you're seeing is a reduction in the intensity of trips being generated by the use. Next slide, please. And this is my recommendation. I do apologize for the extra approve in there, but that I'll hold off with my recommendation and turn it back over to the mayor. Thank you.
All righty, thank you very much. Let's see, we'll now open public testimony. Sue, do we have any proponents or opponents that would like to speak?
Mr. Mayor, I do not have any proponents or opponents. I do believe we have the applicant's representative is on. Kenneth Kennedy Schultz.
Mr. Kennedy Schultz, would you like to add anything to the staff report?
I believe the staff report stands for itself. I'll just reiterate a point that was made in it. We're taking two different types of land uses that the city has an excess of at the moment, and we're converting it into a single land use that the city currently has a deficit of. So this seems to be a net benefit to the city. So I can understand why your planning department agreed with our proposal.
Well, thank you very much. All right, with that, then, any public letters, Sue, or comments?
Mr. Mayor, I have not received any public letters or comments for this ordinance.
Okay, in that case, we will close public testimony and legal announcements from the city attorney, please.
If the decision is not made tonight and continued to another date, the record could be reopened at that later date by motion of the council. Therefore, do not assume no further evidence will be taken. If the decision is made tonight, the council has the authority to reconsider the decision following proper procedure. This motion to reconsider is usually required to be made at the next meeting of the city council. The fact that the council could reconsider their decision does not affect the length of time for appeal of that decision. And before we go on for council deliberation, we would need to inquire from the applicant whether they waive the seven days.
We do.
All right, thank you. So with that deliberation, folks. Okay. All right, hearing none and hearing no request for additional information. Would someone like to make a motion? And remember, we're the waving of the second reading.
Mayor?
Yes, please.
I'd like to make a motion that we waive the second reading.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Then Stephanie seconds. All in favor signify by raising your left hand. All right, the second reading is therefore waived. And another motion, please.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance number 20202864 and read by title only. Second.
And Jules with a second. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, we would like a voice vote on this one, folks. So Sue, if you could.
Mr. Attorney.
Terrence, sorry.
That's quite all right. Ordinance number 2020-2864, an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan map designation from low density residential, LDR, to medium density residential, MDR, and zoning map designation from low density residential, R1, to medium density residential, R2, for Yamhill County Tax Lot 3218-02901, and a comprehensive plan map designation from commercial, COM, to MDR, and a zone change from neighborhood commercial, C1, to R2 for property located at 717 North College Street, Yamhill County Tax Lot 3218-03100.
All right, with that, are we now ready for Sue?
Correct.
Okay.
Counselor Pirros.
Yes.
Counselor Yarnell Holloman.
Yes.
Counselor Martinez Plancarte.
Yes.
Mayor Rogers.
Yes.
Counselor Bacon.
Yes.
Counselor Finley.
Yes.
Mayor 60.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, moving on to new business, item 9A. All right, this is Resolution 20203688, the declaration of District Four vacancy. As we know, Patrick Johnson has resigned, and we need to fill the position. So in the body of this, I believe we have that the opening, or we will have the posting until August 5th and interviews on August 17th. Does anyone have any further comment or questions regarding the filling the vacancy? Hearing none, how's about a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to adopt resolution number 2020-3688.
Thank you, and do we hear a second?
Second.
Jules with a second. All right, any further discussion? All right, all in favor of Resolution 20203688, signify by raising your left hand. Okay, one, two, three, there we go. All right, that passes 6-0. All right, moving on to Resolution 20203686, a resolution initiating an amendment to the Newburgh Comprehensive Plan to update the transportation system plan, water master plan, wastewater master plan, and stormwater master plan. Mr. Rux.
Thank you, Mayor. So on September 16th of 2019, council adopted Resolution 20193596, accepting the riverfront master plan. Outlined within that plan was a series of steps of implementation. One of those was to update our transportation system plan, water plan, wastewater plan, and stormwater master plans. Engineering Department is currently working on this. Information will be brought back in the winter of 2021 for the council consideration. As noted in your report, this is, you're not making a decision on amending those functional plans. You're only directing that we initiate the process, work with the consultants to update those particular plans, then we will come back to the Planning Commission for a public hearing, and then back to the city council for a public hearing. I should note that in the fiscal analysis, all of the funds to update these plans are in the current year budget within the engineering department. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Doug? Okay, sounds good. How's about a motion, folks?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Resolution 20203686.
Second.
A second from Jean. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by raising your left hand. All right, and it looks like, and Elise? Yep, there we go. Okay, so that passes 6-0, Sue. All right, next, item 9C, briefing on city council goal, create and support an urban renewal plan and authority. Mr. Rux.
Thank you, Mayor. Sue, can we have a PowerPoint, please? Thank you. So we're here tonight to talk about goal number four, which is the renewal plan and authority. So this will be an update. As I mentioned earlier in the work session, we talked about housing and other aspects of economic development, but this will be specifically on the urban renewal plan. Next slide, please. So as the council has adopted, goal four is to create and support an urban renewal plan and authority. Next slide, please. This slide outlines a lot of the activities that we started back in, actually, 2015, but they moved into 2016 as well. So there was a lot of work and activity that needed to occur in order to consider the feasibility of having an urban renewal program within the city of Newburgh. So we did our economic development strategy, our tourism plan. We updated the transportation system plan, and we did the downtown improvement plan. By the time we moved to 2017, we updated our water master plan 2018, our wastewater master plan 2019. We updated the economic development strategy. We did the Newburgh Community Vision, the Newburgh Riverfront Master Plan, and the Newburgh Housing Needs Analysis. I think what's important here is that in the economic development strategy, the downtown plan, the community vision, and in the riverfront master plan, all of those identified an urban renewal program as a tool to advance those particular plans that have been adopted or accepted by the city council. Here we are in 2020, and we're now working on the economic opportunities analysis. We talked about that at work session, and we're working on the urban renewal feasibility study. Next. So this gives you some background. We've been working on this for a while. So back in October of 2018, we addressed the issue about program funding, and that was using Fund 14 to do the urban renewal feasibility study and plan and report if the feasibility study is determined viable. In October of 2019, provided the council with a background briefing. When we moved to November of 2019, council adopted a reimbursement resolution. That means that if an urban renewal program is established, it's that the Urban Renewal Agency would pay back the $100,000 that was budgeted to do the urban renewal feasibility and the plan and the report back to Fund 14, and then Fund 14 can use those dollars to continue our economic development activities. In December of 2019, we, council awarded a contract to Elaine Howard Consulting, LLC, to assist us in putting together the urban renewal feasibility study. And again, if that is accepted, then she would work with the city staff to do the urban renewal plan and report. In January of 2020, the council appointed the Citizens Advisory Committee. So we have 11 members on that particular committee. In May, we did a work session on the feasibility study. That was work in process. Next slide, please. When we got to January of 2020, we did an orientation with the Citizens Advisory Committee. February, we did background work with them. In March, we talked about boundary and projects. In April, we went through the financial analysis. June, they saw the draft feasibility study. And on June 29th, they reviewed the final draft of that feasibility study and developed a recommendation to the city council. Next. So this is a map of the area that was studied. So as we worked with the committee, we looked at the downtown area and the riverfront as a starting point, and then connections between those two areas, focused on River Street and Blaine Street. Through the committee discussions, we expanded the downtown area slightly. We also added area along Blaine Street that has a high density residential zoning designation to it. So that's what you see to be on your left side of your screen, Blaine Street, and then, of course, the approximately 460 acre area of the riverfront. Next slide, please. Community engagement was one of the things we focused on when we went out for the RFP for consultant services on this. And so Lacy Digraff has done a great job of putting together a website for us, and we're directing citizens and businesses to that website. We worked with a subconsultant called JLA, and there was a community engagement program that was put together. One of the pieces of that was a fact sheet. It's two pages. We translated that into Spanish as well. Then we moved into creating some videos. And so those are basically a slide deck with a voiceover explaining urban renewal. There are six videos in total. Those are up on our website. And then we went out with a video flyer. And so we've been to the Wednesday market. We've handed out about 450 flyers to patrons who visited that market, sent it to the Rotary, both the early bird and the noon, and they pushed it out to their membership. Same with the Quanis, and I will be giving them a presentation this Thursday, actually, on urban renewal. Pushed it out to the city club and to the Chamber of Commerce. One other thing that we did is we reached out to the Newburgh Ministerial Association through EC Bell, and he got that to the different pastors within the community to share with their various congregations. Next slide, please. So what's next? Tonight, just kind of walk you through what we've been doing since 2018, working on this urban renewal program. On July 20th, we will be back in front of you in the work session to give you a detailed summary of the feasibility study. Elaine Howard will be co-presenting that with me. If the city council accepts the advisory committee recommendation, you have two options in front of you. That would be to accept the study and direct staff to form an urban renewal agency, or you could not accept the feasibility study. If you do not, then basically the work program stops. If you accept it, then we'll be back in August with the appropriate documentation to form an urban renewal agency. If you go with option one, then the next big step would be preparing an urban renewal plan and report. That will take about six to eight months. There's some work that I mentioned earlier that engineering is conducting, and that's those functional plans. We have to have all of those updated and adopted and in place because we have a process that we have to go before the Planning Commission. We have to be able to affirm that the urban renewal plan is in conformance with our comprehensive plan, which includes those functional plan documents. So we have a lot of different moving pieces going on at the same time. And on the ninth of this month, this Thursday, you will also be getting a briefing in regards to the activities on the riverfront master plan implementation from the comp plan and map perspective, development code, and zoning and annexation. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right, well, very good. Questions or comments for Doug, folks? Doug, I have one question, I guess. The approval comes through the city council. That's the top level of approval for the urban renewal district, right?
That's correct. So we will bring, go ahead.
I'm just wondering, you know, this got derailed in the past, and that was by citizen initiative. Is that how that got derailed?
Yes, twice.
Okay, all right. Okay, we'll have to make sure that everybody knows what we're doing and why we're doing it.
I think one of the key components of that, and Counselor Finley, who stepped in for Counselor Johnson, so he's had a lot of reading to do, a couple hundred pages of material, is that's why we've got involved with the community engagement very early in the process. That's why we did the videos, to help people explain the areas that we're studying. It comes up to about 599 acres. We have a lot of our Latinx population living in that area, so that we had to make sure that we're translating this into Spanish as well. So all the material is bilingual by design to reach out to everyone. I have not received any comments negatively at this point in time. One of the key issues is, does this increase my property taxes? And the answer is, no, it does not. It's a division of taxes from the taxing authorities. They are giving up some of their revenue in order to attract new businesses and new development, knowing that when we got to the end of the life of an urban renewal plan, all of that tax, all of that value would go back onto the tax rules. So that's one of the key things. Back in the 80s and 2000s, people were thinking it was raising property taxes. And so we've were thinking it was raising property taxes and so we really paid attention and the committees really paid attention, make sure that that message is out there, that that is not the case.
Awesome, thank you. Um, any other questions or comments for Doug? Stephanie?
Yeah, I just want to say, because I am brand new to it, so I took over for uh Councillor Johnson, but this body of work is so well done um and is really, really well thought out and I have to say, um, just attending the, my first, their last meeting, my first meeting, um, the conversation was really good, really in depth and I feel like this committee is very well rounded and so I'm really impressed with the different perspectives that are at the table and how well all of the material is covered and how it is a lot of material, but if I can understand it, then hopefully um other people will start to understand it as well. So um, I was really impressed with it, um, even though it was a lot of reading and watching videos and such, but uh definitely a really, really impressive body of work, so I'm very excited about it.
Awesome, well, thank you and thank you for stepping in and doing all that reading, so there you go, but thank you, thanks very much. All right, moving on, Doug, I think it's you again, resolution twenty twenty thirty six eighty seven, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Mid Willamette Valley Council of Governments for land use planning services.
Thank you, Mayor, yes. So this is a resolution, so Newburgh provides planning services to the city of Dundee. Uh, we've been doing that since 2008, 2009. Uh, when our senior planner left, uh, we had to backfill and so this, we brought this resolution before you several times now and the COG was gracious enough to step up and backfill for us on the current planning activities in the city of Dundee. Uh, that contract, uh, set to expire, uh, worked with them to extend the services if necessary through the end of December of 2020. Uh, the hope is that we will have a planning manager on board towards the end of September and that position would then take over and do all of the current and long range planning work for the city of Dundee. Uh, I've coordinated this with Rob Dakin, the city administrator, uh, he's acceptable to continuing with the COG to provide those current planning services. And so staff's recommendation on this one is to adopt resolution twenty twenty thirty six eighty seven.
Thank you, any questions for for Doug? Hearing none, how's about a motion?
Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move that we adopt resolution number twenty twenty dash three six eight seven.
Second.
And Jules with a second, Stephanie with a motion, Jules with a second. Um, any further discussion? All in favor signify by raising your left hand. And it looks like that's six nothing, it looks like, Sue? All right, moving on, um, item ten A, council committee reports. Anything going on out there, folks, that you want to let us all know?
I'll go real quick, I, Doug did all my work for me, so, as per usual, thank you. Um, but I did want to say, um, I sent an email um about this to a couple of folks, but I just wanted to point out that I was just driving around downtown the other day and I was stopped at a stoplight and I looked over and it was a Public Works vehicle sitting next to me and there were two Public Works employees in it, both wearing their masks completely appropriately while they were in the vehicle together and I just wanted to say thank you so much to Public Works, um, because that would be a very easy situation where you would just roll down the window and take your mask off, um, because it's not super comfortable, but they were wearing them and they were wearing them appropriately and I'd like to thank them, um, because it really shows that they are keeping our community safe and that they're, they're thinking about Newburgh's best interests, so I really wanted to say thank you to Public Works.
Very nice, yep, and do, do remember that people that have served on this council, there are people at risk out there, right? We need to do this for all of the folks that might be at risk, so let us not forget, including some dear friends of ours, so do not let us forget that, so there we go.
And my.
All right, anybody else, anything else, uh, committee assigned or committee reports? Uh, let's see, I mentioned Equity Task Force, that'll be Wednesday afternoon, we'll start, get that started, hopefully that we'll have a good constructive and broad conversation on the subject of implicit bias and institutional racism. Uh, I've been certain, Newburgh Downtown Coalition, you heard about the, the market and it seems to be doing well, it was off a little bit this past week. Um, and then we're, we'll resume the weekly partner calls and actually I'll talk to Dan about how often we want to do them, but we'll resume them this Friday, um, we took a break for, for the holiday, but uh we'll be back to that. Anything else, folks, on that score? All right, hearing none, let's move on to council committee assignments, item ten B, Sue was, was kind enough to, to prepare um listing of some of the assignments that Councillor Johnson was on, as we said, uh, Councillor Finley uh was kind enough to serve in the Ad Hoc Urban Renewal Committee, so thank you again. Um, and then we've got, we're looking for someone who might want to serve as an alternate for uh MLWAC, so that's the Mid Willamette Area Committee on Transportation. Um, I think the actual um stated position is with Mayor Hill from McMinnville, but uh we do need an alternate if someone is interested in that. Um, otherwise, council pension subcommittee that meets but once a year and if there is someone, I know it's Jean and Denise, I think, at the moment that are on, serving on that, so if anyone would like to do that. And uh, finally, the Yamhill County Parkway Committee, I've been, I've been attending that on and off, I don't know if Dan, are, are you planning on attending that too? That's for the bypass.
I certainly can, I have no plans yet, but I can be directed.
Yeah, okay, well, it's, uh, you know, again, at this moment, they're not meeting all that often, there was a meeting a couple of weeks ago and it probably will be every couple of months, I would guess. So anybody interested in any of those?
Do you know when the uh Parkway Committee meets? Do you have any idea what day and time?
It's early in the morning, it's, uh, I think it starts at seven thirty, I want to say, um, and then goes for about an hour, hour and a half.
Okay. I could probably.
Call the day, but.
I could probably swing that one.
Okay.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, that is actually a formal Yamhill County.
Oh.
Appointment, so you want me to put Stephanie down and email it to Carrie Hinton? Yeah?
Yeah, that'd be great if you don't mind, that'd be awesome. All right, um, blah, 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 anybody, what about MLWAC? Anybody, that, that one meets in Salem, I know, and I think it meets, I want to say monthly, no, quarterly, I think, but we can find out.
I think they meet, they meet monthly, but um, when I heard from the ODOT planner, they, they've canceled like the last four or five months worth of meetings, so.
Okay.
Um, and again, the person would be an alternate, so I think it would be a, you wouldn't necessarily have to be for, there for every meeting, just maybe if the main person could not go.
Okay. Anyone? Well, you know, worse, I can, I can probably do that, Sue, if need be, if uh, if Mayor Hill needs an alternate, I can probably do it.
Okay, I'll let them know.
Okay, awesome, thank you. All right, and we'll get back on the pension subcommittee, is that one, I don't think meets for a little bit, so we'll get back to you all on that. Maybe our next District Four councillor would like to join that, who knows? So, there we go. All right, um, where am I? Where are we? LLC Legislative Priorities, Dan?
Uh, last but not least, um, so I understand that this is a, an annual uh thing, uh, this is an item to, to indicate four priority or top four priority items for the council to then share with the League of Cities, um, to sort of direct lobbying of, for the next session, next full session, and so uh there are 26 items uh listed and some backup information about some of them in the packet and uh again, it's preference and so uh what's indicated in the packet uh is with three uh, uh, three little stars next to it is items that are closely aligned with City Council goals and so it might help guide some of the conversation, but uh basically just looking for a top four uh to be able to recommend to LSE, so that's kind of what I've got.
All right, thoughts, anybody? Lists of your top four of 26, anyone?
I can give you the ones that I picked for my top four.
Okay.
I picked uh E. G. H. And S.
So digital equity and inclusion, um, green energy renewables, expanded local option, uh, you said H, uh, housing and services investments and S, uh, new mobility services.
Yes.
Got it.
Anyone else? Well, I like two of your four, Stephanie, I liked, I like G and H, um, but I was more moved by, what did I say, G and H, K and L.
So local climate action planning resources and local energy generation project support.
Right, but I could be, I could be convinced otherwise.
I had um three of the ones that Stephanie had, which was E, H and S and then I had uh D as well.
Okay, D being COVID, uh, economic recovery investments.
Mm-hmm.
And it's, it was written as.
The H, and what was the last one?
S.
S, okay, thanks.
Yes.
All right, anybody else?
I can certainly get on board with Jules's list, for sure.
D, E, H and S. You know, the, the only thing about S, right, that, that I, it, it looked to me like it was, I, I thought, when I first read it, I thought, all right, mobility services, um, so multimodal transportation, I was all on it, but then I saw like scooters and stuff, so I wasn't really sure if that's, but I could be persuaded to.
Yeah, it looks like ride sharing, uh, you get tricycles as an option too, though, just putting that out there.
Yeah, no, there's a point for that. Um, I too could go with Jules's list and happily do so. All right, anyone else? All right.
Speak now.
Yep. All right, does that mean D, E, H and S are it, then? Thumbs up?
Silence is, silence is.
I think. I got thumbs, we're good.
I see four.
Yes, it is, thank you all, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Uh, is that it? Where's my sheet sheet? That's it, right? Unless anybody has anything else for the good of the order, I believe we had reached the end of our agenda.
Just a reminder about Thursday night's Planning Commission workshop, uh, the riverfront plan, you just have to be there for the first part of the meeting, um, I've sent you all invites.
Okay, yep, thank you, Sue, so Thursday night.
I just want to go apologize that I had to be off for the beginning of the business meeting, I am, I had to get on to work.
No worries, no worries.
And Mayor, I will put together a run sheet for you and the Chair of the Commission for that first portion of the Planning Commission meeting.
Okay, great, sounds good, any idea how long that'll go, Doug, just for people's?
Probably about forty-five minutes.
Okay.
Or so.
All right, so we will see you all again this week, Thursday evening, um, we will see it right here on Zoom, we'll, we'll be here seven o'clock, so everybody else, take care out there, be healthy, wear your mask in public spaces, please, all right? And otherwise, do good things as you always do, talk to you soon, bye-bye.
Thank you.